Here.
Intimate, since we've been here.
Video booth. It must be mandatory for departments to be here. It's nice to have an audience, though.
He gave you the okay, Sam.
You ready? You ready? I'd like to call this January fifteenth meeting. January the fifteenth, meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
All present. Can we rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
No changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Seen no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Brings us to our old business portion of the meeting. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held December the eighteenth, two thousand and eight. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval, second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion or comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And we have a consent agenda with two items. Item three, consider awarding bid for semi-annual asphalt, Public Works Department. And item four, considering, consider awarding bid for three transformers. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
We have our motion and a second. Uh, seen no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Brings us to the new vision, new business portion of our meeting. Uh, item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance zero eight one two two one, rezoning a portion of eight oh one Nottingham Drive from Cookeville region, from CR Regional Commercial to CL Local Commercial Sponsor, uh, Planning Director, Mr. James Mills, and welcome back, Mr. Mills.
Uh, thank you. It's, uh, good to be back. Glad to be here, believe it or not. Mayor and council members, this rezoning request was initiated by Jerry Gahl on behalf of fellow property owners Paul Gahl and James Smith. The property is identified as parcel fifty-nine on tax map sixty-seven eight, uh, Group F. It consists of approximately two point six acres. The location is depicted upon the screen. Here's an aerial view of the property. And I'll get back to this flat in just a second. Here's the current zoning. The current zone of the property is, uh, split with the majority, approximately five point nine acres zoned as CL and the remaining two point six acres zoned as CR. It's contiguous with CR zoning to the north, south, and west, and with CL to the east. The subject property was previously a portion of parcel four on the same map and group. However, it was physically separated from the remainder of the property by a wetland area. That wetland area is shown on here. An area photograph also shows it. So previously, this track was part of this property. The only, um, earlier this year, this track, or early, or late last year, this portion of the property, this section was split from this and added to this. Everybody follow what, what happened? The only access to this portion of the, of the property is through the track it was added to, and it's also only accessed from Nottingham Drive. The comprehensive future land use plan indicates that this property is best suited for mixed density residential and commercial use. Residential uses are not allowed in the CR zone, but are in the CL zone. The CR zone is intended for large-scale commercial uses accessed by streets of at least major collector status. And as noted just a minute ago, the property's only access is from Nottingham Drive, which is classified as a local street. Additionally, the physical characteristics of the property, including size and natural factors, and primarily the, the wetlands that surround it, significantly limit the reasonable use under CR zoning. This proposed rezoning was approved by the planning commission as recommended by the planning department.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So move.
Second.
Now, our motion and our second. Discussion by the council?
Um, just personally, just for clarification in my mind, having this so close to a wetland, what, um, uses could be made with this, um, in this area, and this two point six acres?
Well, of course, wetlands can be mitigated if they want to spend enough money, so that's not a...
So that's not an issue in the...
Well, I doubt that any portion of, of, uh, the wetlands area would be developed, but this actual, the actual division, none of this property is actually within a wetlands. That wetlands is now a part of the property it was split from. So the park that, that you're looking at rezoning tonight does not have any identified wetlands on it. The wetlands split this track, or this portion from this place, this used to be all one piece of property, and the wetlands actually split it. So it's physically split, but not split by tax maps. And again, they took this part off of this and added it to this track right here. And that makes the property split with half CL and half CR. This would allow complete use of this track under, under CL if it's approved.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen no further comments or discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item six, consider resolution zero nine zero one zero one authorizing application to the Secretary of State to form a Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority and to approve the bylaws and/or corporate agreement. Sponsor, Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Mayor and City Council, in two thousand and five, Allgood, Cookeville, Monterey, and Putnam County entered into an interlocal agreement to create a trail authority. This resolution approves the charter documents, and it also authorizes the, um, uh, the trail authority to, um, apply for application through the Secretary of State's office. Um, I recommend your approval for this, but, uh, with one deletion, um, we want to delete, uh, paragraph twelve on page three. Mr. Rader and I just discussed that, and we, we feel that it's necessary to do that. But I reckon, recommend your approval with that deletion.
All right.
We also need to correct, uh, Kim Blalox referred to as the county mayor, and she goes by county executive in Putnam County rather than mayor. And the reason number twelve is deleted is because the rail authority will be a public board, and they have to comply with the Open Meetings Act. And this allowed them to act as a private corporation and act by consent. But since they are a public authority, they have to have a public meeting. So that's why number twelve will be deleted. So if the council can through the resolution with those changes, then we can go ahead and fix that, and then it can be executed by everybody.
All right. I'd like to go ahead.
One question, did, uh, did the commission just approve this?
I talked to Bob Duncan today. I think they're, they're making the same changes. I talked to Jeff Jones. Jeff Jones had called yesterday, and I missed him. But I think, I think the, these are the things that do need to be changed. And I discussed it, like I said, with Bob Duncan.
Pull your mic down. All right.
So, um, then will this be the template, then, that everyone uses?
Right, yes.
If we go ahead and approve this tonight with a correction?
Okay, yes.
I had a question, Kathy, as a...
Don't we have to have a motion on the floor?
Let's get a motion on the floor. I'd like to go ahead and make this as a motion that we approve this, uh, per the changes that were made by, uh, Ms. Andrews and our attorney, Dan Rader.
Second.
We have our second. Now open up for discussion, Councilman Williams.
I just had a quick question. Uh, this authority was, is developed in order, does it have the authority to, um, do the actual construction? Do we, uh, the grant monies that we've applied for that are going to this, any matching funds? Do we give them those monies and they spend those monies, or how does that work?
Um, the city of Cookeville has two significant grants. The county has one, actually, the county has two now. City of Monterey has one. Uh, those governmental entities are, uh, responsible for those particular grants. And I am administering all those grants with the exception of the town of Monterey.
Okay. So in the administration of those grants, and this being the corporate entity that manages and controls the rail, how does that, is there any verbiage that talks about how that marriage occurs as far as the monies are spent? I mean, do they vote on the expenditure of monies that are outside of the monies that we're providing or raising?
Any additional monies, if, if they are the grant recipient, they would vote on that. Um, but if the city of Cookeville, or Putnam County, or Monterey is the grant applicant and receives the grant, then they have the final say as to how, how that money is spent with approval, uh, from the trail authority. Because they will be the manager and the operator of it.
Of the monies?
Of the, of, of the trail, not of the monies.
Okay.
But then the money that is afforded to the, awarded to the local entities, those local entities...
Are responsible for it.
They spend it with approval from the trail authority.
That is correct.
Okay. Why, why are we doing this now? What's brought this forth as opposed to us setting up the committee that was overseeing all this? Why, why are we doing this?
Because the trail authority needs to be a legal entity where they can manage and operate it so that, um, it, it, it's just better if they are a legal entity. Because the interlocal agreement required us to set up a trail authority.
Well, then, okay, so to Ryan's point, then, then we're basically setting up something like we have with a hospital and, and like we have with the town center, right? I mean...
That's, that's correct. A public building authority.
I think it's modeled after the town center.
Okay, so where is it? Is it in, is it in this document? Uh, who appoints board members and how long they serve and...
It's, yes, it's in the, actually, it's not in this particular document. It's in the interlocal agreement as to how those members are appointed. Um, the interlocal agreement that was signed in November, I think, of, uh, two thousand and five. Um, two members from the, two appointees from the county, two appointees from Monterey, two appointees from Allgood, and two from the city of Cookeville.
Right.
One from the Chamber of Commerce and one from the Historic Society.
So what we approved in November of, of oh five then becomes the, the, uh, working document of this that we're approving now?
It's, it's, it's basically, yes, basically.
So like when the, when the airport board comes back to us and they're, they're buying a new beacon system, and every, each government has to put in twenty-five thousand dollars, will, will this group have the authority to come to us and say, "We're spending this, we need this money? We're spending a hundred thousand dollars on, uh, a, a new trail head." So how does that work?
Well, if, if they are the grant applicant and they receive the money, um, no, they will not have to ask for permission to, to do that, because when you create this, you give them the managing authority.
And now they're going to apply for a five oh one C three?
Yes, they're going to apply for a five oh one C three, which will make them eligible to apply for grants. But many of the grants, the larger grants, like through TDOT and local parks of recreation, requires, um, that a governmental entity applies for them, which would be the city or the county.
No, my question's a little deeper than that. If, if they, if, if they're, if that group or that, uh, this authority decides they want to do a project outside of a grant, and it requires a hundred thousand dollars, are we bound by this, as we are with the, with the airport board, basically, that each, each government has to put twenty-five thousand dollars in?
No, no.
So we could opt, uh, city, city of Cookeville could opt out of that, and then the other three, if they wanted to do it, would then pay thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars?
That is correct. You are not, you are not, um, required to put any, any more money in to, to actually develop, to, to develop it or develop anything new, um, because you've already committed to two hundred thousand dollars, but you're not required to put anything else in. What, um, now, all, you're, the interlocal agreement, uh, states that all four governmental entities are responsible for twenty-five percent each of the maintenance and operational cost once this thing gets built. That's what you are committed to.
That'll be an annual appropriation, basically.
Annual appropriations.
And at the airport, we're not, we're not bound by any agreement that if the airport has some project that they're going to do, and they, they ask all four entities for some money, we don't have to give it to them. Although, if everybody else is giving it to them, it kind of puts us in a bad spot. But I don't think we're legally bound to...
And I'm not saying that they're not going to ask for additional monies or support monies. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that we are not required to do that. The city of Cookeville is not required to do that.
Let's say, uh, and I'm just speaking hypothetically, let's say this new authority raises, they have a personal contribution from an individual, and they get a donation of a million dollars. And they go, and they said they want to use this funds in order to appropriate those funds towards the rails with trails. They have the ability to do that?
Yes, they have the ability to do that.
And, and they wouldn't have to come to the four entities that formed our grant monies for approval to do what it's doing, as long as it meets the master plan goal, correct?
That is correct.
But if, how, how are, how are we assured that, you know, someone's not going to build something that isn't a part of the master plan? If there's another PBA out, if there's this PBA out there that does that?
Well, um, paragraph ten, I mean, right at the first paragraph of number ten, at the bottom, it says that, "But," you know, it's talking about the authority shall be and what it is, and it says, "But shall have no power to obligate any of said governmental entities in any way as provided in the act." And if you turn the page, middle of the next paragraph, it says, "Such municipal structures will remain under the ownership and governance of the municipality in which it is located."
So that would mean that that municipality would have the control of what's being built there?
It seems like that's what, the way I understand it.
Yeah, I think the, the way, the way I understood this was done, the, um, the city of Cookeville is not obligated to spend any money that they, that this council doesn't vote to spend. That's number one. Number two, if, for example, the, where the rail trail authority goes through the city of Cookeville facilities, we maintain complete control over those facilities in the city of Cookeville. And they can't be altered or changed, uh, in any way without the city council's approval. For example, there was one park that I think this was going to go through, and that park can't be changed or modified. The city council would have to approve the plans to go through that. So basically, the whole purpose, I think, of this corporation to get this thing started was so they could go ahead and apply for and obtain the five oh one C three, because until they get that five oh one C three, I don't think the grant can actually be funded to, to where the money is available to be used. And so I think that's, I think that's what, what the intent was on this. And I know there were some other documents we drafted that were very specific about the restrictions, and it may be in that interlocal agreement, or it could be in the, um, in the bylaws. And there was a longer set of bylaws that, um, was drafted with this. Of course, the authority can modify those bylaws. But, uh, but nevertheless, uh, the cities, the municipalities are not obligated to spend any money, and we maintain control over the, all the property that we own within the municipality.
And I think, go ahead, start going.
Well, else, in this document also, is there, um, statements that relate to the responsibility of the governments to maintain or repair, um, certain areas or, you know, pathways or the...
We are developing, we are developing a maintenance plan and, um, trail heads that are located within a park system. For example, Cinderella Park. Trail heads that will be in the depot area, the trailhead that will be in the depot area that will be built on city property, that will be maintained by the city of Cookeville's Leisure Services Department.
Um, so that's expenditure of that, of, of the government where the...
Yes, yes, because it's, it's, it's on the, it's on the city property. And, and we just felt, uh, Mr. Woods, I think, felt like it would be better if, if we maintained that ourselves.
Maintaining it, but spending the money to build it?
No, we, the grants will spend the, the grants will build those.
So we would oversee how it was built?
Yes, yes, and we, we are...
Their monies?
We are about ninety-five to ninety-seven percent, uh, complete with the design. And Mr. Shipley has seen the design on the parks, so has, um, uh, Mr. Woods. And, uh, we are, we are trying to make some final changes and clarifications on that right now. Um, we have, in the last year, we have designed eighteen miles of, of trail and seven trailheads. And we're, we're getting close to the end of that. And we're, um, this is getting ready to go to the planning commission next week, as a matter of fact, or the twenty-sixth, whenever that is.
One of the things was, um, the initial draft of this document provided that the rail trail authority was responsible for these trailheads. But when Jim Shipley reviewed this, he didn't feel comfortable with that and thought that the city should maintain control over things in the city's, um, in the city's property, for example, Cinderella Park. So even though if initially this grant builds whatever structure they build on any city property, then, uh, the city controls that. So if the city, uh, wanted to do away with it or, or, um, control it in any way, they could. But, uh, but if it were to fall in disrepair and the grant wasn't sufficient to, um, to keep it up, the city would have that obligation to either close it or, or to keep it up. That much is true. But it's a lot better trade-off to keep control than to lose control to some entity that may not be able to fund it, because the worst thing that could happen, we just pull the plug on the thing, you know? But, um, but it's better, and that was a good, good change that, uh, Mr. Shipley did, did recommend when he reviewed this document. So, so the city stays in control of everything in the city limits on its property. And everybody starts out with this fund from the, from the grant, but if something happens later on, uh, it's just like anything else. It could, you know, cease being used or, or, or not be successful. And then at that point in time, the city could just, uh, could either modify the, whatever structures to, for another city purpose, or, um, you know, tear them down.
What, what kind of liability would, do we have? Are we acquiring more liability than we ordinarily would have as a governmental entity and someone injured on...
No, I don't think, I don't think we have any additional liability, but we would have exposure for additional liability for whatever. It'd be no different than if nobody went to Kane Creek Park, then we'd never have any exposure. And if, so the more people that use this, the more chance there would be an accident could occur. So that could increase your risk just because of use. But as far as increasing the limits or anything like that, it wouldn't increase anything like that. We're still covered under the Government Liability Act.
And I, I had one other question. Let's say the P, this PBA gets a grant, or they have a contribution, and they create a, a trailhead that is not on the city of Cookeville's property, but it is in the city of Cookeville. And they want to do a development or a trailhead there. So they're not going, if they've got their own money and they're a part of that PBA, they're not going to have to come to us for approval?
They're going to have to come to the planning commission for approval.
If it's in the city of Cookeville.
Uh-huh, if it's in the city of Cookeville.
Whether it belongs to the city of Cookeville.
Because what I'm asking about coming to council is because ultimately, if it's not on city property and someone is, and we have a maintenance agreement for our portion of it, and they interject funds in order to build a trailhead that's not on city property, then ultimately, in the same manner, we may be responsible for maintaining it. And I think we'd just like the decision to say, "Yeah, that's a good idea. It's not our money, but in the future, if this goes into disrepair, we know we're going to have to maintain it because there won't be a P, there might not be the PBA to do that." Does that make sense?
And that's correct, um, but there's not going to be any additional trailheads within the city of Cookeville, because you have one at the depot area, and you have one at Cinderella Park, and then the next one will be at Allgood. And that, that would just be overkill to, to put an additional trailhead.
Okay.
Well, but to answer your question, it's like anything else. If, if it's used and it's successful, it was not a problem. If it falls into disuse, then Allgood may let theirs go, and that ours may be pristine. Or Monterey may let theirs go, and ours is pristine. And then you've got to decide, is this an investment we want to keep investing in? Or is this something we want to do something else, else with? But everything that is built or maintained in the city of Cookeville is going to have to comply with the city planning and zoning and codes and all that kind of stuff. And, and I'm sure that, um, they can be cited or, or whatever. I mean, I think we're going to be, we're, the city's going to have people on this board and have the, know what, know what's going on. And I don't think we're going to be in a vacuum on something like that, but...
And, and I appreciate, I, just one of those things we review after a work session. I just didn't want us to, to give up the opportunity to have some kind of control as it relates to maintenance or expenditure of money on properties that are our own.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and we've, uh...
And we hope they raise millions of dollars through private public funds.
We hope so, too.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion by the council? We'll open it up to the audience. Any comments or discussion from the audience?
I just want to say one thing. We are, I mean, I mean, make no mistake about it, Mr. Shelton and, uh, Mr. Williams are correct. And, uh, Ms. Davis, we're creating an obligation for the city here, there, you know? And it's, uh, and it could be a greater or smaller obligation, depending upon how successful this is and how much partnership we have between these other governmental entities. But it, we are creating an obligation for the city by entering into this.
Which is why I thought maybe it would be good to have some verbiage that says they needed approval from council. I mean, at, but the planning commission, in my understanding, in order to do that, then they would have to go through the planning commission in order to get that. And we will eventually get approval on it, just like we did on the rezoning, I guess. We'll get approval in order to do that, correct? Is that right, James?
For things that affect the city?
I think it depends on what you're talking about.
Right.
If it deviates from the master plan, which has been adopted, then yeah. But if you're talking about some minor changes or, you know, that's not going to come through the planning commission. I don't know that a trailhead necessarily would come through.
But if it's a building, it has to comply with codes.
Yeah, but improvement not, might not be a building, is what I'm saying. And, and having some approval process where they, these improvements are done, just say, "Yeah, we, we're great that you're doing this, and we approve that you're doing it because ultimately, we're going to be maintaining it if something were to happen."
Well, you're, well, the two, the two folks that are appointed from, from the city of Cookeville that, that you appointed, I mean, that is their responsibility, and the chairman, to let, to let any of the entities know what they have planned. But like, like James said, we have a master plan, and they're, they're not going to deviate as far as building any kind of trailhead, different trailheads from that master plan, because we don't have the money to do that. And we want, you know, we have quite a bit of money, and we have, we have money to, to build, start in the depot area and do the depot trailhead area. And we have, uh, to expand Cinderella Park, to put a, a little bit of extra parking in a, in a shed and some bathrooms. And then we're going to go as far up the mountain as we can get. And we're going to, um, uh, probably have enough money to do the Allgood trailhead. And maybe we can get to Paragon. And then, um, we also have funding, uh, the, the town of Monterey has funding to start their trailhead. And also, the county has funding to come down the hill or do part of the, do part of the trail actually in Monterey, so that both ends will have a little piece of the pie.
Mm-hmm, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, now, elaborating what you just said, Monterey has money to build their trailhead, so...
That's correct. And their trailhead is incorporated into their park system, and they will, they will maintain and oversee their trailhead, because it is built on, it's going to be built on Monterey property.
Okay, but you said earlier, the one we built on the depot property, we're not paying for.
The grant is paying for that.
But the grant's not paying for Monterey's?
No, it's, yeah, there's a grant that's paying for that, but it's a separate grant from the, from the...
What's the town of Monterey?
We have four or five different grants, and the grants are paying for different portions. We have, we have two million dollars, and we also have a seven hundred thousand dollar one, the city of Cookeville does. The seven hundred thousand dollar one will pay for, uh, uh, the trailheads in the city of Cookeville and as, as far as we can go on the trail. Then the two million dollars, what's left over from the two million dollar grant after acquisition and design and legal and whatever else we have to pay, that goes to construction to begin at Cinderella Park and go as far as we can get. And I don't know how much money is going to be left over just yet, because we don't know how much acquisition is going to cost at this time.
Okay. Now, Mr. Rader, I, I need, I want you to elaborate. You said this is creating an obligation, so explain, I mean, I, I have an idea of what that means, but reiterate what, what you were meaning by creating, and I know Mr. Davidson was shaking his head, so obviously, there's a, there's some kind of, I want to hear all this, which, can you, let's explain all this out so we all can talk about this.
Well, there's no way to conceive of any possible eventuality that might arise, but just, Ms. Andrews said they're building restrooms. Uh, well, you know, you're going to have to have, uh, maintenance, janitorial maintenance, services, electricity, water. Uh, eventually, the building may have to be painted or roofed or, or maintained. Eventually, the building may have to be painted or roofed or, or maintained like you would any other type facility. Then, you know, depending upon the hours that it's open, you're going to need security and police protection, and, and things of that nature. So just, just, just like any other, like, just like any other structure that would be used by the public out at Kane Creek Park, or, or any, any of the other places like that. So I, you know, you could conceive of all kinds of unusual things that could occur. But generally, I think, you know, barring some unforeseen catastrophic event, it would just be normal and routine maintenance. And if the grants failed and the city were left with these structures, then you'd have, the city would have that obligation to decide, yes, this has turned into a real nice area, the public uses it, and we're going to keep it up, or no, we're going to go with some alternate use for it. But I think, I think those are the kind of things that I was, routine things I was thinking about. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
And let me add that the, that the Trail Authority, once it becomes a legal entity, it is, it will be carrying liability insurance.
But we've got to be careful about that, because if you buy liability insurance and the council makes a resolution that adopts that liability insurance, then you expand your limits to the extent of that insurance. And that was why we've always been very careful to leave our limits just what they are in the Governmental Liability Act, and our insurance policy coincides with that. And therefore, you don't expand your liability and don't expand your coverage. Because if we pass a resolution and expand our insurance limits, then our liability is expanded to equal those. So you, yes, you can do that, but then you're obligated to have insurance or become self-insured for that extra amount of money. So you want to be really careful how you handle that kind of stuff.
Well, we'll, we'll be asking and working with you about, with that, Mr. Ryder.
And that goes for the county too, and the City of Monterey, and the City of Allgood, because they have the same immunities the City of Cookeville has.
There is a, back to what Councilman Williams was concerned about with the structures, at the end of paragraph ten, says Trail Authority will be responsible for ensuring that each municipality in which a structure may become an integral part, component of the Trail, component of a Trail Authority project, that each municipality is aware of the standards, themes, aesthetics, public safety, funding restraints, and other aspects of the project that may have impact upon the maintenance operations, lease, and or disposal of said structures by the municipality. So I'm assuming that that, they have to report back to us then, that, you know, what they're going to do.
Yeah, and I, I guess all I would, all I would say is I think that an approval process in that paragraph would be nice. Then that we're, we're saying, yes, we bless what you're doing, and we are accepting the liability of maintenance if you're unable to maintain it yourself.
Well, that would be only true
Was that implied, or no?
No, that would only be true for the facilities that are located in the City of Cookeville proper, on our property, okay?
Okay.
And basically, basically what this is, if it's on our property, if it's in Cinderella Park, or it's at the Depot, it's on property owned and maintained by the City of Cookeville, it's just like any other new structure on that building. We're, if, if, if things don't go successfully financially for it to support itself, we're going to be obligated to support that structure. If they build something on property that's not inside the City of Cookeville, then we really don't have any obligation. The city doesn't have any financial obligation to that. That would be either Putnam County, if it's in Putnam County, or Monterey, or Allgood, unless the city would want to, you know, give them a helping hand, so to speak, because they, because the whole project is deteriorating, because once you leave Cookeville, it's not as nice as it is in Cookeville. And they may feel the same way about Cookeville and want us to spruce ours up a little bit, you know? But it's, it's, we're just, we have control over what's, what's on our property. And that's the, that's the key. And sink or swim, it's ours, on our property.
And this council, or a future council, would have the, would have the ability, the authority, and, and be able to say, okay, we're, we're not putting any more money in this.
I would say the city could withdraw from this if they wanted to.
That's okay, that's fine.
Well, while we're talking about it, what, there's going to be a trailhead at the Depot?
In that, in that area, in that parking lot, in the parking lot.
Are they going to add bathrooms there?
Yes.
See, that's what I hear all the time, is that when we do Depot Days and stuff like that, we need that, and so let this, let this group pay for them, and they'll maintain them.
Anybody who's been at any of the athletic facilities in this area knows that public restrooms in these type facilities require maintenance.
Yes, lots, yes.
And I know we have that with the Board of Education at the athletic facilities, and I've been to enough Little League baseball games and girls' softball games to know the concession stands and the restrooms are going to need maintenance. And if the, for some reason, the grant won't fund that maintenance and it's on our property, I think we're obligated to do that. And we're definitely obligated to keep it secure through law enforcement.
Well, and definitely, on my, in my tenure as a councilperson, this is one of the things that I have been asked the most about. When is the trail going to be done? When is the trail going to be done? And definitely, I'm looking forward to the completion of it, because I think it will be a wonderful addition. And if this document helps get it, move it further on, let's do it.
Okay, Mr. Lilly, do you have some comments, if you could?
Keith Lilly? My name's Keith Lilly. I am the acting chairman for the Trail Authority, the Trail Authority that was created by the document that Kathy mentioned back in November of oh-five. So I am fifty percent of the Cook, City of Cookeville representation on the Trail Authority, Tom Williford being the other fifty percent. And I guess I just wanted to mention, and I believe that this evening, all the comments you've had here are excellent, good, good discussion, but there are three documents that are of concern here this evening. I believe the first is that Certificate of Incorporation that we're talking about, the second one being the resolution document, that the last paragraph of that resolution refers us back to the original interlocal agreement among the four government groups that discussed a whole lot of what you've been talking about this evening. And I guess I, I don't claim to be a lawyer and don't know all that detail, but I feel like almost everything that you have brought up this evening is addressed between the original interlocal agreement, which the resolution and the adoption of that resolution document tonight will tie us back to the original agreement. And then, of course, the new Certificate of Incorporation just takes us that formality to the state of Tennessee, to become official in the eyes of the state. And, and I personally believe that then filing for the 501(c)(3) and all of the due diligence that comes with that, and the reporting structure that's established then, will help us all to communicate better with the City of Cookeville and all the other three government groups, the budget and so forth that needs to be prepared annually. I think it'll all help that flow, and we'll all have a better working relationship in the future. So I look forward to seeing this thing happen and spending the money, getting the design all finalized, which we're very close to accomplishing. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we appreciate your work on that committee and getting us all pulled together for us. And Kathy, same to you, we appreciate all your hard work. Any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience?
Cool.
We haven't called for a vote yet, but all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. A little anxious?
No, I'm not anxious, I just
Item seven, consider authorizing the city manager to execute contracts to acquire natural gas supply capacity. Sponsor, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, we purchase from the pipelines that come up from the Gulf Coast. We, we purchase capacity in those pipelines to, to guarantee us gas up to the Cookeville City Gate. And we have had a, a contract for several years with Southern Natural Gas Pipeline, and the capacity that we reserve with them is one thousand five hundred and thirty-three decathromes. And we're paying monthly for that, twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And back in the fall, started looking at that contract, wanting to try to find replacement capacity for that that would be cheaper. And we've been able to do that through the Tennessee Gas Pipeline with Atmos Energy. We can replace that capacity and eliminate that twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, replace it with a monthly cost of seven thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. And when these two contracts kick in, they won't start until, the first one won't start till November of oh-nine. Then the other, we'll roll it all up into one big contract in November of oh-ten, but it'll save us sixty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars per year. And I'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion, a second to approve?
Who's approval?
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Quick, while we have the chance. Seen no discussion?
Sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Since we're, obviously, we've been buying because we were trying to help our price, and so we, we bought ahead, right, son?
Now, this isn't gas itself.
Right.
This is just space in that pipe to flow the gas up here.
But, I guess I'm, okay, I'll ask you this then after we vote, that's fine.
Okay.
It was, it's basically about, okay, if we, we bought capacity at a certain price, prices have gone down. So I've been asked, are our prices going to go, are we going to be able to charge less now?
Okay. This, this price itself is just because we're changing pipelines.
Correct.
But we will be looking out throughout the budget process, looking at our rates to see if, if this can impact the rates or not, certainly.
I still don't think you understand his question, Mike.
Okay.
Doesn't have anything to do with this. It's, we've, we've been buying gas, we've been storing it.
Right.
If we've been buying it at a higher price than we can buy it now, that's the question. Are we going to be able to lower our prices or whatever?
For the gas costs that we've been buying throughout the last six months or a year, I mean, gas prices have been coming down, and our rates have been coming down as well.
Right, so do, well, so our rates are coming down even though we've paid more for, I mean, we, we bought gas at a certain price, right? We, we secured that gas because we thought it was going to go ahead and go, and keep going up.
Right, we've been buying throughout
But we've been pricing, that's my question.
We buy gas
We've been price averaging then, as it can, okay, good.
Yeah, yeah.
And so the rates will adjust down accordingly.
Yes, and they have been throughout the last four months.
Thank you.
So this doesn't, by tying ourselves to Atmos next November, let's say if we're reserving this line, that's not saying we're necessarily going to buy the gas from them, because what if their rates are dramatically higher and it sucks
Storing it there.
The sixty-eight thousand dollars away, can it?
They're just stores.
This is just the, the pipe, space in the pipe to flow gas up here, has nothing to do with the gas itself
Right.
that we purchase. And then the gas itself, you pay for that on top of all these demand charges that we have to pay for.
Right. So what I'm trying, what I'm asking you is, yeah, they're going to give us seven thousand dollars, we're going to see a five thousand dollars a month savings in two thousand and nine, but they charge us ten thousand dollars a month more for fuel, then we're five thousand
The fuel cost is not determined by Atmos at all. That's, that's, it's just like a stock, it's traded on the futures contract, and it, it changes every two seconds, the prices go up and down. They, they don't control that price whatsoever.
Is this almost like a trucking contract, except it's a pipeline contract?
Basically.
Okay, a delivery charge?
Yeah.
It's a reservation charge to maintain us and space in that pipe, so we'll, we'll know our gas is coming through their pipeline.
Got you.
I'm not going to lie to you.
I was looking here, special conditions, it talks about buyer agrees to pay seller supply reservation fee for each month of delivery period in addition to the contract month price, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-five per month for the months of November first two thousand and nine through October thirty-first, two thousand and ten. What's that? And then it goes, and then it goes to seventy-two, eighty-one, seventy-five per month for the months of November first, two thousand and ten to October thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
Right, in November of oh-nine, the, the five hundred and eleven decathromes that we have, that's what will kick in in November of oh-nine.
Okay.
Then, and it's at four seventy-five a decathrom for that five hundred and eleven. Then in November of oh-ten, the other contract will kick in, and it'll be the total one thousand five hundred and thirty-three decathromes that we'll pay for.
Okay.
So that, that's how it's worded in the contract, to roll it all up into one contract in November of two thousand and ten.
And then it's, so this is what, about a four or five-year contract here?
It goes through two thousand and fourteen, it'll automatically renew every year at that price unless either party wants to terminate it.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen no further discussion, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Item eight, hold a public hearing on the annual progress report of the planning services for the following annexation areas, Old Sparta Road, Horace Lewis Road, Old Bridge Road, Fallingwater River, Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road, Shipley Road, East Highway Seventy and Interstate Forty, Metheny Cora Road, West Cookeville Interstate Forty, O'Neill and West Twelfth Street, Presley West Twelfth Street, Shagreg Road, Gaud Dodson Branch Road, Rebecca Place Bunker Hill Road, and Bunker Hill Road Love Lady Road. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills. And welcome back, Mr. Mills.
Thank you again. Glad to be here. The Tennessee Code requires that an annual report be prepared and published, and a public hearing held on the progress of implementing plans of services for annexation areas until the plans of services have been fully implemented. There are thirteen areas annexed by the City of Cookeville since two thousand for which services specified in the planning services remain to be completed. Those areas are depicted on the screen. This annual report was recently completed and published in the Herald Citizen. Report indicates as follows, police and fire protections, all the waste collection, disposal, street maintenance and street signs, recreational facilities, planning, zoning, and inspection services have been provided to all thirteen areas as specified in the planning services. Water service has been provided as specified to all but three of the areas, a total of six fire hydrants still need to be installed in the East Highway Seventy Interstate Forty area, and the Bunker Hill Road Love Lady Road area. Additionally, the city has still not obtained the service areas for much of the West Cookeville Interstate Forty area. Eight areas have not yet had sewer service provided. Natural gas service improvements remain to be completed in the East Highway Seventy Interstate Forty area, the West Cookeville Interstate Forty area, and the Bunker Hill Road Love Lady Road area. As a result of a settlement with the Electric Cooperative, significant progress was made in two thousand and eight regarding the provision of electrical service. Service to six of the annexation areas is or will be provided by the City of Cookeville by January thirty-first of this year. It's also anticipated that the remaining seven areas will be served by the city by no later than December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. That's the general summary of the report. If you have any specific questions, or if there are any questions from any public in attendance, I'll be glad to try and address them.
Do we have any comments about the public hearing? Any comments from the audience? All right, thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
This time, we open up the floor to citizens to come and speak for up to three minutes. We have anybody that would like to come and speak. And at this time also, I'll go ahead and open up the floor for the council for any comments or announcements they might have.
I've been speaking with some folks in the Leisure Services Department, and they are, for people who are interested in any kind of weight loss program, they're doing this great thing on Monday nights, five-thirty to seven-thirty, free of charge with counseling, et cetera. They tell you about exercise, and it's right there at the Parks and Recreation Place, what's that called?
Kane Creek Recreation.
Kane Creek Recreation. And I just thought it was neat that we have, we have lots of things available to people, and that particularly is a nice thing for health and also for financial reasons, that you don't have to pay for that. And everybody bundle up and stay warm.
Very good. Any further comments? Seen none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You're letting vote on that. I thought you were going to hit the gavel sooner than that. I'm going to leave.[1791.83]